I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council and the City Council after holding their own public hearing will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary Platts and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Present.
Ms. McHugh.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Is here.
Mr. Ventura is here. Karen Magnos is here. Chairman Willschel.
Is here. And also with us we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. For the folks in our audience, the format of our meeting is that we will start with each agenda item that you see on your agenda that's available at the back of the room. We'll go to our planning staff to get background information on those agenda items and then we'll have the petitioner come forward to speak to that item. If there's anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against any item on our agenda tonight, we'll also have an opportunity for those folks to come forward and speak to us before we make our decision. With that, we will start in on the miscellaneous section of our agenda, item number one.
Petition 2021-11-08-06 submitted by Jeffrey Scott Architects requesting approval of all plans pursuant to Section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance in connection with a proposal to remodel the exterior facade and modify the approved landscape plan of the commercial shopping center Concord Plaza at 16112 through 16184 Middle Belt Road located on the east side of Middle Belt Road between Five Mile Road and Terrence Avenue in the northwest quarter of Section 13.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Concord Plaza is a single-story multi-tenant facility. It's located, as was mentioned, on the east side of Middle Belt Road between Five Mile and Terrence. The building, the multi-tenant center here is about 34,800 square feet in gross floor area, sits on a parcel that's roughly 3.65 acre in area. The frontage along Middle Belt is about 360 feet and then on Terrence, 440 feet of the property. As you can see from this zoning map, is split-zoned. Southerly portion is Zone C2, general business, whereas the north, two-thirds of the site is Zone C1, local business. The plaza was approved by City Council in 1986. The landscape plan that was approved with the development showed a total of 44 trees along Middle Belt and Terrence streets. The trees on the plan included a variety of deciduous as well as evergreen trees within the parking lot and around the plaza. There were additional trees. And then in August of last year, the Inspection Department noticed that several trees had been removed. Based on the original plans, it is estimated that a total of 42 trees are missing from the site. The owner was notified of the violation and was instructed to replace the trees according to the approved landscape plan. Also, they were given the option of planting it in accordance with our new ordinance standards. This is Article 10 of Livonia Vision 21, of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance. And I'll just go through what those requirements are quickly. They do differ from what the original approved landscaping plan provided for. In the case of the new ordinance, it's based on the amount of a street frontage and the ratio would be one deciduous or evergreen tree for every 40 feet of frontage plus one ornamental tree for every 100 lineal feet of frontage plus eight shrubs for every 40 lineal feet of road frontage. So when you apply these standards to this particular site, what would be required along Middle Belt would be no fewer than nine full-size trees, four ornamental trees and 72 shrubs, and then along Terrence, 11 full-size trees, five ornamentals, and 88 shrubs. So the petitioner has submitted a revised landscape plan. This is the same plan that you looked at the study meeting last week. It provides for no additional trees. Instead, the plan proposes mostly shrubs as well as other ground cover, including used ornamental grasses and spreading junipers. Those would be grouped and installed along the street frontage of both Middle Belt and less so on Terrence. In fact, not as many shrubs are shown along Terrence. The existing facade improvements mostly include changes to the upper part of the storefront. Building is predominantly brick, does have some EFIS, but mostly brick. And you can see these red panels. These are, this is a rendering showing what the building would look like after the improvements. There would be EFIS panels installed on the upper portions of the building as well as some fabric awnings, new coping along the top, relatively minor improvements to the exterior facade. And that's the extent of the petition. With that, Ms. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First is a letter from our Engineering Department dated November 30th that reads, "The existing building is currently serviced by public water main and sanitary sewer as well as private storm sewer. The submitted drawings do not indicate any modifications to the existing leads and we do not believe there will be any further impacts to the existing systems. Should be noted that the developer may be required to obtain a permit from the Wayne County Department of Public Service should any work occur within the Middle Belt Road right-of-way." That letter is from David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Public Safety Livonia Fire and Rescue dated December 6th and signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. Another letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police dated November 23rd and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. The Inspection Department notes that there is an open violation on the property for the removal of trees from the required landscaping. We are holding our enforcement action in abeyance while the petitioner seeks approval of a new landscape plan. That letter is dated January 3rd and signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next, a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance, signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. That letter is dated December 13th. And then lastly, a letter of no objection from our, from the Office of the Treasurer dated December 3rd and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff? Ms. Smiley?
Yes, just to confirm, you said there's a new landscape plan, but it was the one that we saw last Tuesday, and the new landscape plan remains with no trees on Middle Belt?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smiley. Mr. Ventura.
Ms. Chairman, I was not here last week, but as I read the write-up and listen to you, to your presentation tonight, do I correctly understand that the petitioner has the option to comply with the Vision 21 zoning ordinance as opposed to the restoration of the requirements placed in the property in 1986? Is that basically true?
Yeah, that's, that's what we've offered.
And that results in a reduction of the number of trees that he'd have to plant by approximately a third. Goes from 42 trees down to 29 trees as I read your write-up.
Yeah, that would be correct. I think we had, let's see, nine plus 11, that's correct, yeah, if you include the ornamental trees.
Right. So there's a significant reduction already built into the...
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Ventura. Any other questions for our planning staff? If not, our petitioner, I believe, is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium. Good evening, and we'll ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jason Curris on behalf of Belmont Properties LLC. Address is 24500 Northwestern Highway, Suite 100, Southfield, Michigan 48075.
Thank you, Mr. Curris. And what would you like to tell us beyond what you've heard from our planning staff already?
So there was mention this evening about an updated landscape plan, and we actually have one to provide to hand out. Apologize it wasn't provided prior to the meeting, but it's fresh off the drawings from our landscape architect. So Marcia, who is the architect on behalf of Jeff Scott, would like to hand it out and then I can run through it briefly and discuss it with the Commission.
Sure, you can take it over to Mrs. McHugh and she can pass them around.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So just a brief summary while this is getting handed out. Per the original plan, which was up on the screen, there was a total of 10 trees and five ornamentals proposed, which was discussed prior to the Commission meeting this evening. Since that time, Belmont Properties, myself, the landscape architect, our architect, have gone back and we've revised the plan to include trees on Middle Belt as requested and include more trees on Terrence for a total of 17 trees on the site and eight ornamentals. So we've increased that substantially. Per the previous discussion about trees being removed, Belmont Properties acquired the property the end of July 2021. There were a total of eight trees removed at that time that were dead and had the dead tree disease. Those were fronting Middle Belt, and I believe there were one or two on Terrence. Balance of the non-compliance of the property was prior to Belmont Properties' ownership, just to clarify for the Commission. However, we are submitting this new plan to Planning Commission for consideration, which again, as you look at it as it's designed, it has the trees both as requested on Middle Belt and on Terrence, both the larger full trees and the ornamentals. And we are looking for consideration and relief as described previously, which is, anyone who knows this property, I know the Planning Director indicated we wanted to do tasteful and minor improvements, nothing crazy aesthetic, but something to refresh the shopping center in the taste of the neighborhood and surrounding community in addition to providing the businesses themselves at that shopping center with a little bit of relief, a little bit of modernization with both landscaping, the refreshing of the property, and to give them a little bit of visibility based on the way that the center is actually positioned on the road, which is almost backwards to the traffic and L-shaped, something that was not designed by us, of course, back in the 80s, but something that was acquired and obviously we're looking to improve it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Curris. And we don't want to gloss over the fact that you are looking to make some changes to the shopping center itself with the EFIS panels and so on, but obviously a lot of the discussion at our study meeting and probably tonight is going to be around the landscaping aspect of things, but we may go back and forth on both the improvements to the building and landscaping as we get into our questions. Is there anyone with any questions for our petitioner at this time? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Curris, or whoever, who is appropriate, could you kind of walk us through this plan here and show us where the, where the significant trees are?
Hi, Marshall Horning with Jeffrey Scott Architects, 32316 Grand River, Farmington, 48336. I can kind of walk you through what's changed since the study meeting of, I'm sorry, is that what you asked?
Yeah.
Okay. So originally, we, Mr. Curris said, asked us to approach this with, so that we could see the center. You know, at the study meeting, we, we could see that it was very well overgrown, what was there from 1986. So the approach is, is to keep things low, and what we've taken from the study meeting is to group several items, several trees along Middle Belt. We have a ginkgo here in the corner in the, that would be the south, southeast corner here?
So it's like the one called GBF?
GBF, yes, GBF. And then along Middle Belt, the four, in these two clusters here, along here, it's indicated as four LSS, and those are, let me get the proper name here, they are slender silhouette American sweet gums. So they are, they're a full grown tree. They are, they do keep a little slender and we are able to cluster them, which we talked about at the study meeting. So we got four here, oops, sorry, four here, and then four on this side. We did add to the, to the plantings around the sign, we have an ornamental tree here, and then we have two ornamental trees on either side of the entrance along Terrence Avenue. And then these are tulip trees, you know, full-size tulip trees back here along Terrence. We have six of those, and then another ginkgo indicated as GBF back here. We also have some ornamentals along Terrence right here, two of those, and then the rest is similar to what you saw last week with filling in with low, low lime plantings, shrubs, things of that nature.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments from any of our commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magnos.
So you might have said this early on, and I maybe didn't hear you, how many trees are you planting?
There are nine along, nine along Middle Belt, these four, these four, and this one. And then along Terrence, we have ornamentals here, two on either side, and then we have these six tulip trees back here.
Well, I'm sorry, let me clarify, how many, how many full-size tree, full trees?
Full-size trees?
Yeah, what are you planting?
Seventeen, I believe, right?
Seventeen full-size trees and eight ornamentals.
Okay, seventeen and eight.
Oh, along that's on the entire site.
But not along the two main, main, Middle Belt and Terrence, not, not...
I've got nine and then...
Six.
Seven.
Seven.
Nine, seven.
Okay, and what about the trees that you're removing? This, this plan comes back to us with even more removals on it, it looks like. Is that right?
No, I mean, the additional, the, we talked to our landscape architect and he actually recommended that these two normandy maples come down.
So those are the bigger trees on Terrence?
Those are the bigger trees on Terrence that he, he actually recommended those to come down.
And then what's the removal in, in the back next to the building?
These are the same as you saw before.
By your thumb, but you're removing, you're proposing to remove something else?
No, these, these, this is what was on the original, on the plan that you saw last week.
The only two that would be removed would be on Terrence, which would be the large trees.
Yeah.
Everything else is added to the site.
I'm sorry, let's see. I think there's some, some, a little bit of scrubby trees back there right now, like a, there's a honeysuckle and a buckthorn, just some smaller bushes that he's removing to replace with these, but that was on the previously submitted plan from last week right here. So we didn't change that at all.
Okay, when you, when you submitted your original plan to us with the ground cover trees or shrubs or whatever they may be, there were some pictures of them, so we kind of understand what they look like.
Yes.
No pictures of what you're planting here?
It's, they're, they're the same that we presented last week, we just put a different, put a different amount of them in places.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're, it's the same plantings that you saw last week and the trees that were showed, I believe, I believe I had all of them on there.
Any other questions, Mr. Karen Magnos?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. I'm looking at the pictures that were provided in our packet and I don't see the LSS, slender...
Okay, I apologize, I thought that one was on there. It is similar to the tulip tree that you see, that was in your packet.
Which is LTF?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, which is LTF, and I believe the other one...
It's a little more columnar.
Yeah.
It's, it's very narrow.
Okay.
So it's a, I can show you a picture of what it looks like.
Thank you.
Excellent.
So this one right here?
Yeah. Okay. So that's why you would cluster four of them together?
Exactly, yeah.
All right. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't here last week.
No, go ahead, Mr. Ventura.
Chairman, so can you explain why you don't want to comply with the zoning ordinance?
So when the property was purchased, it was purchased in a condition that our company felt we could improve, which is why it was purchased. The number one issue with most of the folks at that building, in addition to the building itself being run down, was they were having visibility issues. Center was constructed in the mid to late 80s, pushed way off the road, L-shaped, in the opposite direction of traffic. So traffic, obviously, would have to make a left-hand turn into the center if, as they were heading south versus folks coming north, it would blow by the center if they didn't know it was there or couldn't see it. The original landscape plan, and there was a picture provided last week that showed, I want to say back in 2007, where there were substantial trees still remaining on the property prior to Belmont Properties' ownership, and you couldn't see anything. You couldn't see the storage, you couldn't even see the building itself. And so as we have improved so far on the property, our goal was to fill the substantial vacancies that were there. We talked with a lot of the folks, and from our experience, as described in the past with hundreds of centers that we've bought and turned around for communities, the number one issue on a lot of these properties is that they're directionally wrong, they're blocked by whatever they may be blocked by. In this case, there was substantial landscaping prior to our ownership. Now, when we took over the property, the issue we had was there were, in addition to the, the construction going on in Middle Belt, there were eight large trees that were overgrown, never been trimmed, never been pruned, but more importantly, they caught the dead tree disease. So as the Planning Director was talking, when inspections came and sought, we had removed those with the idea that we were going to be coming to Planning Commission at some point with plans submitted for a remodel, and we figured that landscaping would be discussed, which we appreciate that they're holding the violation in abeyance pending the outcome of Planning Commission or City Council. And so we have done our best to come up with a plan that we felt was reasonable. We looked at comparable properties, as was discussed in the meeting last weekend, there was a number of other sites similar to ours, both new and old and on Middle Belt, that were not in the 2021 Vision Plan that was approved, or we weren't really sure what plan they were in because they had limited, if any, landscape or trees fronting their Middle Belt or their hard corner that they were on. And we did provide a plan last week of just some, some comparables on some other properties that were similar to ours that had, you know, substantially less landscape and greenery than we did. And we're just trying to do both, as I explained to the commissioners last weekend, we're trying to fulfill what's required. We appreciate the allowance of the 2021 Vision Plan, which is less than the 1986 plan. We're also trying to make sure that we can preserve, protect the property and obviously the business owners that were substantially struggling due to, obviously, the circumstances going on the last few years. So we felt that this was a compromise, knowing that the center has really had substantial issues over the years. We're looking for a little bit of relief, obviously, from our original plan last week of 10 trees and five ornamentals. The Planning Commission said go back to the drawing board, see what you can do to add trees to Middle Belt. We've added trees to Middle Belt, both full and ornamental. We've added some trees to Terrence, full and ornamental. While we are not fully there at the 29 total, we've got 25 total. So I think we've come a long way since last week and we're hoping that we can get a little bit of relief from the Planning Commission this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions? Mr. Bonjero?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just want to go back to Mark. Mark, do these, the full-size trees that they call out, do those satisfy the requirement?
I'm not really in a position to speak much about, well, I can tell you that the ginkgos certainly would work because we see those quite often on our landscaping plans similar to this. The sweet gum, the normal variety is the full-size one, not the narrow silhouette. So I'm not familiar with the narrow silhouette. I would not picture that, I do not classify that as a...
Full-size?
As a full-size. I mean, it grows tall, it only grew, you know, six feet wide, but it could, it can grow up to 60 feet in height, so it's, it's not something that you typically see along the street frontage, you know? I think what we typically look for is something with, with a, with more of a canopy, so it's a bit unique.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Mr., Mrs. Smiley?
Mark, between those two clusters, the four and the four clusters on Middle Belt, do you know approximately how many feet that is or yards or, would you have any idea?
Between the clusters?
Yeah, between, yeah, the two, four LSS.
Well, you figure, well, you've got 361 feet, so it's probably, you know, 200 feet between the two, I would think, at least.
200 feet?
At least, yeah, I mean, I'm just guessing.
So over 60 yards in between? That's more than half a football field between the two sets of trees that are clustered together that goes straight up?
Again, I'm just, yeah.
Okay.
Just a rough estimate, yeah.
Well, certainly, from this commissioner, I would say that certainly does not fulfill what I thought I was going to get, or even close. And I go to that center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Ms. McHugh?
Mark, I know we've asked you this multiple times, these numbers, but we said right now, it's supposed to be 29 full-size, and how many ornamentals did we say? I feel like we've tossed these numbers around somewhere.
No, 19 full-size.
19?
Twenty.
Nine and 11.
And nine ornamentals. No, excuse me, 20 ornament, 20, 20 full-size.
20 full-size, okay.
20 full-size, I apologize.
And then...
And nine ornamentals.
Nine, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
All right, all set, Ms. McHugh?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Mr. Bonjero?
Just a question for Mr. Curris. What's the reason, why, why are you guys taking down the maples?
I'll let my architect answer. Our landscape architect actually recommended that with the mix and the look of the new trees we were adding, again, just to kind of modernize the landscape. Those trees were a little bit outdated, old, problematic, they needed to be trimmed to the point where we may kill them if we trimmed them up, and so he just suggested taking those down, starting over on Terrence, and that way the whole property meshes together with his landscape design.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions?
At least four trees are...
While we wait to see if there's any other questions, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anyone wishing to speak on this, just wanted to make sure. We'll go back to the Commission. Is there any other questions or comments from any of our commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wall?
You said that there was, in this new plan, there's 17 full-size trees, but I must be missing one, I'm getting 16. So can you, I got nine along Middle Belt, four, eight LSS and one ginkgo.
Right.
And then I've got...
Got six tulips along Terrence here and then one ginkgo.
All right, so that's 16.
Yeah, I think you were, yeah, this is, we're, yeah, we're maintaining a red maple, but that's not in the frontage, so...
You're maintaining one of the red maple. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magnos.
As I was driving around the city the last few days, I looked at some of the properties that you took photographs of, comparing your property to those with maybe some lesser landscape at a different, different point of time, and then I couldn't help but notice there's a lot of properties with much greater landscape that you didn't share pictures of with us because they're done properly. So it just seems to be a holdup that, you know, we talked in great length last, last, last Tuesday, and to come back with this plan, it, with no time to review it... And to come back with this plan, it, with no time to review it, doesn't seem right to me. I mean, we, we have pictures that are not here to look at. We have something that, that, again, is, you, you say you want to meet, meet the, the spirit of the ordinance or whatever you said there a few minutes ago. And I got to tell you again, I, I just don't see that at all. I don't see that at all. I don't even see you trying, from my perspective. So, just want to tell you that, and we'll see what happens here.
Thank you, Mr. Caremagna. Any other questions or comments from anyone? If not, Mr. Curus, is there any other final comments you'd like to make before we make our decision?
No, I think the only comment I would say is, we've tried exceptionally hard. I know it's difficult. I know that we didn't provide certain properties, as Commissioner previously had stated. Some are office, some are industrial, some are a different character. Every property, and that's the beauty of real estate, has got a different character, a different design, a different look, a different feel. And I'll be honest with you, I'm exceptionally proud of what the landscape architect and our architect came up with, considering what we started with originally. And to be honest with, with everybody, you know, the, the landscape architect was, was challenged based on direction I gave him because a lot of times, when the trees come down, you know, developers sometimes don't want to put them back up. We want to change it, we want to update it, we want to refresh it. And so, it was challenging to, to get to where we are at, and I'm very proud that we got here. I'm hoping that there is some relief given. I think that we presented this to some of the businesses there, they were happy with it. While 150 feet may seem like a lot, it goes by like that when you're driving 45 miles an hour. And the idea ultimately is, this is a neighborhood shopping center. We want to make sure that we protect and preserve not only the existing businesses in there, but we'd like to bring new ones in there so that any commissioners who do go there maybe have more of a variety when they're at that shopping center. So, we appreciate both meetings, your time, and are hopeful for your consideration on some relief. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curus. Just two questions for you, for myself. What direct, you, you just mentioned, based on what you just said, you mentioned that you gave direction to the landscape architect, and he was challenged by your direction to come up with this plan. What was your direction to the landscape architect?
We wanted to modernize the property, and this was prior to reviewing the ordinance. Obviously, his job was to review the ordinance, look at what we needed to do. My vision was for him to design it ultimately, but design it in code. And the original conversation was, we'd like to provide lush landscaping throughout, but keep it fairly low to the ground so that folks could see the existing businesses. We were losing businesses on day one. The biggest complaint was they could go move across the street, and people could have them better visibility. There was no trees at the shopping centers just to the north. And so, our job was to try and protect and keep them there. So, the direction initially was, if there are problematic trees, and the only problematic trees that we had, which is why the two maples were not cut down, they were living, they're healthy, while they need to be trimmed, and the trimming may kill them based upon just all the overgrowth. The ones that were taken down were dead, and they were dying. And so, we did take those down with the idea of, okay, now what? Now, what are we going to do? The original plan we came up with had, I know, limited trees on frontage, which was not really conducive to our study group. And so, when I went back with the landscape architect, we wanted to try and make sure that whatever we could provide would fit as close to the guidelines as possible, but with the same goal of not blocking and disturbing the vision path of the businesses that were there. And thus, we created the 17 total, 16 on the, on the frontage versus the 20 required, the eight ornamentals versus the nine required. So, in my eyes, we've come up substantially on the request of the trees to be on middle belt, which was the, was the critical discussion last week, get some trees on middle belt, and, and ultimately, what are you going to do on, on terrance? And, and I think we've done a good job at, at getting as close as we can to what I believe is, is a reasonable plan.
Okay. And the other question that I had for you is, and I know that you just got this plan at the last minute, but you, you know that landscaping was a significant concern of ours from our study meeting. Why wasn't the landscape architect brought to this meeting?
I do not know. I do not know his availability, if, if it was something that was necessary. I thought the critical piece was, to be honest with you, get the trees, design it better, come back with a better drawing. If it was more of a, hey, we want to talk about every plant, I would have definitely brought, brought him here. I didn't know that. We did talk with him on Friday, we went through this, we redesigned everything. And that's my error, if it was something that was required in planning commission to, to chat specifically about the, the plants and the, the types of trees and everything.
All right, no, that's fair. I, the only reason I say that is because we just got a plan here at the meeting, which is unusual to get something at that last minute. And we don't have the expert who created this plan in, in front of us to ask questions of or to explain it. So, that's the reason I asked that question. If there's no other question...
If the commission would allow, I can step outside and see if it's available to get him on the cell phone, if that helps the commission at all.
I think that moment has probably passed us at this point.
Okay.
If there's no other questions from any of our commissioners, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagna.
I'll make the denying resolution. If the request to remodel the exterior facade and modify the approved landscape plan of the commercial strip center at 16112 through 16184 middle belt is hereby denied for the following reasons. The petitioner has failed to comply with the general standards of the requirements as set forth in Sections 1.0 through 2, 10.03, and 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance. Number two, the lack of trees shown on the proposed landscape plan would have a negative effect on the neighboring properties as well as the, the city as a whole. Allowing this be detrimental to the aesthetic quality of, and appeal of the overall site and negatively affect alter the character of the property. That the planting shown on the previous approved landscape plan shall be reinstalled to the satisfaction of the inspection department, and that any remodel of the exterior of the shopping center shall be reconsidered once the required landscaping is completed. And, number six, that the petitioner has failed to comply with the concerns deemed necessary for the safety of the, and welfare of the city and, and the residents. And I would, this talks about the previously approved landscape plan or the, the plan that they submitted to us. That's different than what we're looking at here. But I'd like to also say that this plan doesn't spread trees along the frontages as we requested. It doesn't even come close, as a matter of fact. So, that's my reason for, for denial.
All right, Mr. Caremagna, is there support for that motion? Okay, we have a motion to deny by Mr. Caremagna, supported by Mrs. Smiley. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call a roll on the motion to deny.
Caremagna votes aye. Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Chairman Wilshaw?
Votes aye, motion passes. And this is a, I suppose this is a site plan, Mr. Toramina, so the petition would have 10 days in which to appeal the decision, correct? Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
All right, so, motion's been denied by us. You have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to our city council. And then, if you do that, they'll hear it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curus. And with that item finished, we will go on to item number two in our agenda.
Petition 2003-08-SN-08, submitted by Aver Sign Company, requesting to amend Council Resolution Number 549-03, adopted by the Livonia City Council on October 22nd, 2003, to allow the illumination of tubing around the Pump Island canopy of the BP gas station located at 27428 Schoolcraft Road in the southeast quarter of Section 24.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you again. This is a request to amend a council resolution, in this case, Council Resolution 549-03, to allow the illumination of a Pump Island canopy. So, this site is the BP gas station. It's at the northwest corner of Schoolcraft and Inkster Roads. It was in 2003 when city council approved the sign package for the gas station that limited the area of all wall signs to 100 square feet and the total area of the monument sign on the property to 52 square feet. As part of that approval, city council included a condition that, quote, "No LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building, the Pump Island canopies, or around the windows," end quote. The petitioner is now requesting to amend this condition in order to allow for an LED light strip that would be installed around three sides of the Pump Island canopy fascia. I'll just note that the, the restriction that was imposed by city council in 2003 is consistent with the action that they've taken on most commercial developments over the past 20 years, including gas stations. I know the petitioner, the study meeting last week provided some information regarding the details of this. I don't really have those plans available for you to view. I just have photographs of the existing gas station. But as you can see, this is the, the condition as it exists today. It's the typical BP fascia, canopy fascia. This would be modified, so this would be reinstalled. It's, it's somewhat similar in design. It's the same concept in general where the light band extends across the center of the fascia. And in this case, it would occur on three sides. The west side of the canopy, the south side of the canopy facing Schoolcraft Road, and then the east side facing Inkster Road. It's our understanding that the north side facing the building would not be illuminated.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, you can read out the correspondence on this item?
Certainly. We have a letter from our inspection department indicating that they have no objections to the petition. That letter is signed, or is dated February 1st, and signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. A letter from our Department of Finance that reads, "I have reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. The following amounts are due to the city of Livonia. Unpaid water and sewer charges currently due on February 10th, 2022, in the amount of $90.23. Please contact the undersigned if you have any questions." That's signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And then, lastly, a no, a letter of no objection dated January 13th from the Office of the Treasure. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning director? I see no questions. Our petitioner is here in our audience. Feel free to come up to our podium. Good evening.
Evening. I'm Jennifer Glover. I am representing Ray. Sorry, I don't know the address off the top of my head.
It's okay, you're with the sign company, though, correct?
I am. 359 Livernoy, Farnell, Michigan, Aver Sign Company.
Excellent.
I had some correspondence with Scott Miller last week regarding that light bar and the square footage that we calculated for the light bar on the three sides of the canopy. The light bar would be 15.5 square feet. And that, also, there'll be three helios, which is the BP logo. Those are 10.56 square feet each. So, we, we're looking at approximately 40 square feet of signage on the canopy in its entirety. And it, it will uniformly match the rest of the stations in Livon, in the city of Livonia with the lighting on the canopy, as well as all the BP stations that are currently there.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Glover. Is there any questions for our petitioner, regards to this item?
Mr. Wilshaw, I don't have a question for you, but I have to tell you that, and I know you don't watch television, you don't watch this thing on television, but we sit here every week, or every other week, and have these public hearings, and we, and we make motions with regard to site plans. And in virtually every one of them, light bands are prohibited, and we're specific about it. And, and it is just the status of the, the standard of the city, and it's the ordinance of the city, and that's what's reflected in the council resolution. And I have to tell you, I can't support going against what we sit here and do every single week with every other petitioner that comes before us. It's, it's not the standard of the city, it's not the charge that we've been given to enforce. And, I'm sorry, but I, I can't. Whatever the other circumstances you have, that motivates you to bring this before us. I, I just can't, having said no to so many other petitioners, say yes to you tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any questions, comments, Ms. McHugh?
Mr. Toramina, can you tell me what would be the allowed square footage in total for signage?
See, I'm sorry.
The square footage allowed for the signage, when we're taking into consideration the band and the logos and all of that?
100 square feet total for all wall signage. So, that would include anything on the gas station building, as well as on the fascia of the canopies. So, wall signage is limited to, to that 100 square feet total. And I believe the report indicates that the sign on the building currently, I guess 30 square feet.
Thank you.
And as was noted, I think they're adding, it computes to about 50 square feet. And the, the petitioner indicated that she talked to Scott, and, and I guess they sort of recomputed it to 40-ish square feet. So, in any case, it's, it's below the 100 square foot minimum. Below the 100 square feet, yeah, if you include all the light band, the logos, and whatever's in the building currently.
Talking 30 plus 50, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Excellent, good question. Any other questions? Mr. Bonjero?
Um, just a question for the petitioner. I think last week at the study meeting, you said this is a requirement from BP?
Yes. I wanted to add that. This is, it's a brand requirement. Each individual brand of fuel has their own specific signage that they require at each site. So, this, this is a very big issue for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Ms. Smiley?
Yes, I guess this is for the petitioner. You said there's another, another BP in Livonia that has this...
Yes, ma'am, there are three other BP gas stations in the city of Livonia. Each one, from what I can tell, has a light band around the can, the gas canopy. If it's illuminated at nighttime, I don't know, I don't live over here to see it. But they all have them, yes.
I guess then I'm confused how we passed those three and not her. Do, do you know, Mark? Was it, was it...
I can speak to only one of those three. I did not check the other two. The one, the most recent of the three would be at the corner of Schoolcraft and Farmington Road, and we included a similar condition in the approving resolution. And apparently, that canopy is, has, is, is being illuminated at night. And that's in violation, and the inspection department is aware of that violation, to my understanding.
So, they're in violation. I guess she's asking permission and they're asking forgiveness. Is that where we're at?
They haven't asked for anything yet.
Oh. So, what happens to them when they're in violation? Do they... Will they make them...
They'll, they'll be told to, to either remove it or to stop illuminating. I, I suppose if the, if the light band remains, you know, if they didn't want to take it, if they don't want to take it down, what's in violation is, I suppose, the fact that it's turned on in, in the evening, so. Whether or not they can, how, how they're going to correct that, I don't know.
You don't happen to know the hours of that one on, of the BP gas station? Is it illuminated 24 hours?
Um, I don't, I don't suspect that it is illuminated 24 hours. I think it comes on for nighttime illumination, and I don't know their hours. I apologize, but I don't.
Do you know what the hours are of this gas station?
Um, Ray's gas station, I believe, closes... Oh, go ahead.
4:30 to 11 PM as of right now.
Okay, and then the ga, and then the light would go off at 11? The illumination?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. I mean, that's, you know, you know, as I explained at the last week, I would just do according to what the other stations, and like I said, I'm off the highway. And there is probably about four out of the five stations that are on the highway that are all illuminated. So, you know, I was just trying to kind of, I guess you would say, fit in. I was just trying to kind of, I guess you would say, fit in with, with, with that, so.
Okay, and this is gonna sound bad, but I'm inclined to deny it and, and let you go to the council, let them hear your, your story behind it and the fact that BP is doing it. Uh, that the BP wants you to do that, or that's their brand, and that's how they do it. So I guess I'm kind of supporting you, but telling you that I'm probably gonna deny it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And can we just get your name and address for our record?
Uh, Ray Salem, two seven four two eight Schoolcraft, Livonia.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Salem. Is there any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Long?
Could I get Ms. Glover to take me through the, the math again on the signage? You said that the, the, the light bar was fifty square feet or fifteen?
Fifteen point five.
Fifteen, okay.
Square feet.
Yeah, okay. Now that's where my math's going off. Okay. Good. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. And any other questions for anybody?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagnos.
If you do not get the LED light band, what does BP do? Are they gonna pull your, pull your BP station?
Brian Tucker with Corrigan Oil, seven seven five North Second Street, Brighton, Michigan. We are the supplier to Mr. Salem's station. There are alternatives to that. Those alternatives are based upon these circumstances. So the first plan is to always fully meet image requirements. It happens when situations like this occur where decisions are made where it's not allowed. I think from the brand's perspective, and I can't speak for the brand because I only represent as a distributor. They're not here to speak on their behalf. The first request is always to fully illuminate the canopy.
So when you can't do that, you talked about alternatives. What are the alternatives?
The alternatives are for non, non-illuminated canopies.
So BP's not?
The light strip.
So BP's not gonna walk away from, from, is it Ray?
Right.
They're not gonna walk away from Ray over LED light band here?
No. No. I think to, to, to support Mr. Salem in the spirit of fairness and what he's competing with, that's the reason for the request.
So you, you speak on behalf of Corrigan delivering fuel for BP?
Yes. What I can also say is that of the other BP stations that are in the city, Corrigan is not a supplier.
Is not a supplier, okay. I, I gotta say that I'm, I'm probably not a fan of the, of the LED light band. The only thing that I, that I, if there were an exception here, it would be because this doesn't face any residential properties. It faces the freeway. So if there's an exception for me, that would be it, but I gotta think about it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Good discussion from everyone. I don't think there's anyone else in our audience wishing to speak to this item, but I will throw that out there in case someone's hiding that I can't see. Don't see anybody jumping up. Anything else, Ms. Glover, that you would like to add before we make our decision?
I did a lot of thinking after the study session that we had, and one of the things that I would also say as a female, finding a station, a gas station at night that is illuminated is, makes a world of difference of where I'm gonna go and buy my gas. Because I'm not gonna go to some station that might be kind of dark. There's a lot of dark corners. You know, so I, I personally will look specifically for an illuminated station so that I know that I feel, at least I feel, that I have some safety there. That's all I needed to add.
That's a great comment. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ventura?
Uh, excuse me. Are you saying that there are no lights under this canopy at night?
They, they have the normal, like.
So it's illuminated by the light, so you can see what you're doing?
From the expressway, when you're driving, you can see that, you know, that there's a station up there if you see that glow.
But your comments led me to believe there were no lights there.
No.
So it's well illuminated.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I think this would just be an enhancement to that illumination.
Color added to that.
A colorful one, yes. All right. Any other questions or comments from anybody? If not, oh, Mr. Bongero.
Just a quick one.
Go ahead.
Echoing kind of like what Commissioner Caremagnos said, I, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's not intrusive. It's subtle. I think it adds a little bit of an effect. Slightly. I don't think it's gonna be, you know, put, you know, beaming into people's eyes, and it's in commercial only, not around residential. So I, I don't really have a problem with it myself.
Fair comment. All right. Anybody else with anything? If not, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura?
I'm gonna offer a denying resolution that the request to amend council resolution five four nine dash zero three to allow the illumination of an LED light band around the pump island canopy of the BP gas station located at two seven four two eight Schoolcraft Road is denied for the following reasons. Number one, that the proposed modification is not supported by Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, which prohibits outlined tubing signs. Number two, there's been longstanding policy by the city not to allow this type of illumination around pump island canopies. Number three, that the applicant has not justified the need to illuminate the pump island canopy at this location. Number four, that the petitioner has failed to affirmatively show that he, that the proposed modification would be aesthetically in the city's best interest. Number five, that the, that approving this type of illumination would set an undesirable precedent for businesses of this type.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion to deny by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mrs. Smiley. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh?
No.
Mr. Bongero?
No.
Mr. Long?
Sorry.
Take your time.
Some, some things are not simple.
Understood.
No.
Caremagnos votes aye. Chair Wulshaw make the call.
Votes aye, and the motion to deny is passed. The petitioner, you will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing the city council. And if you choose to do that, then they'll take up the request and you can have them make the decision.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, everybody, for your time tonight.
Thank you all for coming, and have a good night. And that takes us to item number three on our agenda. Mr. Secretary?
That's the motion to hold a public hearing to consider amendments to the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, petition two thousand twenty-two dash zero one dash zero six dash zero one.
Uh, Mr. Toramina, do you have any comments to make?
I'll just say that we're set to present these changes to the commission at their public hearing scheduled for February twenty-second, and so we'll devote much of next week's study meeting to going over each one of those changes. There's about thirty, thirty-two in total.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there a motion by someone to set a public hearing date for February twenty-second?
So moved.
Mr. Long, and supported by?
Support.
Mrs. McHugh. So we have Mr. Long, Mrs. McHugh.
Is there an amendment on there for exposed neon tubing for gas stations?
Now with his time.
At least the consideration of such. I mean, that's a, that's a tough one.
And we want to make it clear, this is an approving motion, correct?
Yes, it is.
For this? Okay, very good. And if there's no objection, I think we can safely show seven to set that public hearing for February twenty-second. Thank you. So with that, we will now go on to item number four on our agenda.
That is the approval of two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-seven Capital Improvements Program, the C I P.
Excellent. And Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. And just show you what this looks like, but this item involves consideration of the city's six-year capital improvements program. Like previous plans, the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-seven C I P incorporates recommendations from each of the various city departments that are responsible for planning and overseeing significant capital improvements. The plan provides a schedule of anticipated public capital expenditures. This is over a six-year period. It begins in twenty twenty-two and ends in twenty twenty-seven. Included with each entry is a brief description of the capital improvement, the city department responsible for overseeing the project, the year or years that implementation is anticipated, the location, annual cost, funding sources, total project cost, the city's share of the total cost, project status, priority ranking, and area benefited. So it includes a lot of information on each capital item. A new approach was used to create this C I P. Instead of compiling the data from each department and then combining it into a single spreadsheet, the information was entered using a database program, and it was, and it is being stored on SharePoint, which is a cloud-based content management platform. So this, there are several benefits to doing it this way, but most importantly, what it does is it allows the capital improvements program to become a living document since the data can be updated at any time and instantly retrieved. Currently, the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-seven C I P has four hundred and twenty-two entries with a total estimated cost of two hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. There are eight major project categories, and I'll just give you a quick breakdown of the anticipated expenditures in each one of these categories. They are building with a hundred and ten entries at ninety-five million dollars. Equipment with a hundred and thirteen entries at seventeen point two million. Land improvement projects, twenty-eight entries at twenty, at a cost of twenty point four million dollars. Paving, fifty-four entries at the cost of fifty-three point two million. Technology, seventy entries, three point nine million. Vehicle purchases, that's thirty entries with, at a total cost of twenty point two million dollars. Water and sewer, ten entries at thirty-two point nine million dollars. And AIDS category, other, there are eight entries there with a total cost of about twenty-five million dollars. So the Planning Commission is required to regularly prepare a capital improvements program of public structures and improvements pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. This is P A thirty-three of two thousand and eight. And I'll just point out that what this does is it just, it, it serves as a guide for forecasting and budgeting. It is not to replace the, the, the annual budget by any means. This is just a, a list of, of projects that are desired by each of the departments. Some of them are, are recurring expenses. Others are, would fall into that category of wishlist. May, may not ever come to fruition, but I'll just, it, again, it's, it serves as a good guide for budgeting and forecasting.
Well, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. And normally, this is presented to us on a spreadsheet with many pages and really microscopic print. So this is, this is a nice update for you guys to use this new format, and I think it'll work out well for you going forward.
Thank you.
And this is, I, obviously, a, um, we're not gonna talk about it a lot tonight, but this is a lot of work that goes into making these, a lot of coordination with different departments, so we appreciate the hard work that goes into that.
Thank you again.
Uh, is there any questions or comments from any of our commissioners regards to the capital improvement program? Mr. Bongero?
Chair. Mark, so each department puts in their wish list. So like, for the new police headquarters, forty million, that would be their wish list, but they have a alternate to renovate the existing for twenty.
Correct.
So if they don't, so either way, they want something.
Either way, apparently there is, something needs to be done. Again, it doesn't go through the details of that, but
Yeah.
That, that was included. And there are, there are not too many like that. That's, that's kind of one of the outliers that I think we've seen in the capital improvement programs going back at least ten years, so.
Yeah, got you. Okay, thanks.
Maybe, maybe twenty now.
I was, I was gonna say, I've seen that almost maybe twenty years now, I've been asking for that. And it is desperately needed.
And this, by the way, is a, it shows you what the program looks like with a couple of examples, but it's a, it's a scrolling list. You can see each one of the entries is provided.
Excellent.
With all the information.
Any, any other questions from anybody? If not, there is a recommended, recommended motion in our packet. If someone would like to offer it.
I'll read it.
Sure, Mrs. Smiley.
Okay.
Sounds very official.
Whereas pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, P A three, thirty-three of two thousand and eight, as amended, the city of Livonia Planning Commission is responsible for the preparation of a capital improvements program for the ensuing six years, and whereas the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-seven capital improvement programs prepared through joint effort of several city departments has been submitted to the city planning commission for consideration, and whereas a duly noticed city planning commission public meeting was held on February the eighth of two thousand and twenty-two, and whereas the capital improvements program presents a realistic program to aid in the determination of a complete fiscal planning strategy for the city of Livonia, and whereas the city planning commission stands ready to do all things necessary to cooperate with the mayor and the city council in maintaining a functioning program of capital improvements and capital budgeting for the city of Livonia. Therefore, be it resolved, the city planning commission hereby adopts the twenty, twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven capital improvements program, and be it resolved, the city planning commission recommends the city council adopt this capital improvements program and use it as a guide for funding priority capital projects.
Excellent. Do we have support for that?
Support.
Mr. Bongero? Mrs. Smiley, did you feel like you needed a scroll to read that?
Well, you know, I did. There's a lot of Ps in there, by the way.
Very good. And I do want to note, just for our minutes, that I didn't ask if there was anyone in the audience with any comments on this because there is no one left in our audience, so just had to get that in the minutes. If there's no questions or comments on this motion, you want to call the roll, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, I will. Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Bongero? Aye.
Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Caremagnos votes aye. Chair Wulshaw?
Votes aye. Motion passes. And that takes us to the last item on our agenda. Mr. Secretary?
The minutes, the approval of the minutes of the one thousand one hundred eighty-second public hearing and regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Very good. All members were present for that meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Long, and supported by Mr. Ventura. That is Long and Ventura on approving. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show seven with all members voting aye. I see no objections, so we'll note that. And that takes us to the end of our agenda tonight. Is there any other business that come before the Planning Commission this evening? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
By Mr. Ventura.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Long to adjourn. And again, if there's no objection, I think we can safely show seven to adjourn our meeting, which will, note, is adjourned at eight zero eight P M. And we want to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to our community and wish the community a good night. Good night, Livonia.